At this time, I'll call our meeting to order. We have with us this evening Pastor Michael Mathis from the Mission Field Ministries who will lead us in our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you will all, please rise.
Once again, oh Lord, you alone are God of the universe and we give thanks to you, thank you for your presence here with us this evening as we've come before you, oh God acknowledging our great need for you and the affairs that are being carried out in this great city of Hope Mills. Lord, we thank you for your kindness and we thank you for when we err up and I will walk with you, oh Lord, you are forever forgiving of us and we confess, God, that we err up. And so we thank you, God, for being here. And Lord, we also give thanks to you for our great mayor, Mayor Jackie Warner. We thank you for your continued protection of her, endowing her with wisdom in her leadership. Thank you for all of the board members, Lord, and we ask that you will continue to shield and protect them as well as their family. And we're forever grateful, God, for our first responders, Lord, also always so willing to put their lives in harm's way to protect the citizens of Hope Mills and other places, God. We thank you and we ask, God, that you would continue to keep your warring angels around them, shielding and protecting them, oh God, even when their backs are turned to danger. You shield them, Father. And now, God, as we get ready now to discuss the agenda at hand, we continue to call on you, oh Lord, to endow our leaders with wisdom. Give us the people, God, understanding. Help us, God, to be peaceful and supportive of the things that are that are being discussed here. And we won't fail to thank you, Lord, for restoring the things at the dam and all the wonderful things that you're doing here in the city of Hope Mills. And we give thanks to you now in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I think, Madam Mayor, just one correction. Under new business, I think we got two A's. So the second A needs to be a B, I guess.
Okay. Under new business, if you'll make, okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda. We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The first thing on our agenda is I'm going to ask Ms. Adams if she will introduce our new town clerk.
I would, with great pleasure, I would like to introduce our new town clerk, Ms. Jane Starling. Ms. Starling comes from, or Mrs. Starling comes from the city of Fayetteville where she was the deputy city clerk for five years. She is a certified municipal clerk with the International Clerk Society Organization. And her North Caro- and she also has her North Carolina Municipal Clerk certification as well. She's a native, native of Whiteville, Virginia, and has lived in North Carolina for twenty-four years, the last nine of those in Cumberland County. She and her husband Fred have been married for thirty-eight years next week. So, happy anniversary. And they have three adult children and three grandsons. She also enjoys attending church, spending time with her family, taking yoga teacher training classes, reading, kayaking, and working with stained glass and growing flowers. So, it's with great pleasure that I have the introduction of Ms. Starling, Mrs. Starling, and I think it's going to be a very pleasurable working arrangement, so.
Welcome aboard. So glad to have you.
Welcome. This is Dean.
Okay, the next thing we have is, we have a reading of an essay by Alzadair Sebastian Ray. Is he here?
I don't see him, Madam Mayor, and, yeah, they, they went to great lengths to try to arrange this for tonight, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't know what happened. I did not receive any notification that they were not going to be here.
Okay, and if they should, if they should by some chance get here, what we'll do is I'll go back and pick it back up, okay? Now, the next thing we have on our agenda is something that is one of our first events that's taking place for our lake celebration. And so I asked Brent Spivey if he would come and tell you about a cardboard boat. Because he's heading up the cardboard boat race, and we thought it was important that we let you know and inform you about what does that mean. So Brent, I'm going to turn it over to you. He's a national champion in cardboard boat racing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I am Brent Spivey. I've been a cardboard boat racer now for about fifteen years. You don't have to be totally crazy to put cardboard on water, but it does help a lot. One thing I really liked about cardboard boat racing is a family event. My son and my wife have participated with me. Unfortunately, about four years ago, I dropped my wife in the White Lake in a boat called Orca, and she hasn't raced with me since, but I guess that's the way it happens. This boat is the boat that went to Arkansas with me and my son in twenty fifteen, and we did win the world championship. It's a five hundred foot course. When we got there, there was three former world championship boats at the race. I was very nervous. But we did five hundred feet in fifty-two seconds. The closest one to us was about fifteen seconds behind us. So we did come on the world championship. This boat is primarily built for speed. I have built a boat as long as twenty-five foot that had six people in. Unfortunately, it broke in half. But the most important thing is what you do with your seams. You can only use corrugated cardboard for this race, but you have to protect those seams. So we're allowing people to use duct tape or masking tape to put on the seams or edges. Can't use any waterproofer. This boat would not be legal for White Lake, Hope Mills, because it has a waterproofer on it that the world championship allowed. Up to that point, it would be legal. You can only use water-based paints like latexes, and you can only use one part glue. So you can't use wood glue, liquid nails, that type of paint. This boat was made out of about five sheets of cardboard. As important, the bigger sheet of cardboard you have, the better, you have less seams. But I have pieced them together and gone from there. Easy enough disasters. I've probably been in about thirty different boating disasters, but I'm still here. One of the cool things we're going to do at this race is have a demolition derby at the end. So all the boats that survived the races will crash until there's one boat left. So not only can you win a racing trophy, you can win trophies for the best-looking boat prior to the fleet. You can win a trophy for the Titanic award for the most spectacular sinking, which unfortunately I won a couple of times. You can win, if you survive the derby, you'll win the ironclad award. Come away with that. So it's really fun. I'm hoping something will catch on to Hope Mills. There was a place that was during the state championship, and I think they've let it go. So maybe we can get this going here, and there's something to make in Hope Mills.
Thank you. So, and we have, we have, he did go to the chamber and took an example of how you, a pattern, sort of, so to speak, how you could build a boat. But if you have questions, he's been very helpful. He's, he's not racing in this boat, in this race. He's an advisor, because we knew if he raced, he probably, he would have the advantage. Any questions from the board in reference to it?
I was going to ask Mr. Spivey if he could bring his boat a little closer to our camera, so those out there in YouTube world and TV land can see it.
It is my phone number on the, the wire that's being handed out. For anybody to call me, I'd be more than glad to give them all the information I can. I've already talked to a few people, and I said, I've given you my fifteen years of knowledge in five minutes. But I'm more than glad to do that, because I think it's a pretty cool sport activity, especially if it's a family base. I built, like I said, Orca from Jaws. I built Merinac and Monitor.
And we also, tonight, we want to, and the chamber and other people will be selling them, but we have T-shirts for this event. And this is, this is what they look like. It says, "The Town of Hope Mills Lake Celebration Committee presents the inaugural cardboard boat race and demolition derby." And the thing about this is, is Brent also designed the T-shirt. And so he's, he's been very helpful. And this is being sponsored by the Members Credit Union. So the T-shirts went on sale this evening, and they're fifteen dollars each. This money will go to fund one of the other events that we have coming that's right now unfunded. So the idea is this lake celebration is going to be family fun, it's going to be water events, and people like Brent have come forward to help with the different events. And it's just been very, very exciting that we've got volunteers willing to share their talents. So, thank you again for coming this evening. And, and again, if you notice his boat's name, "The Spirit of North Carolina," I thought that was a neat idea, too. So, thank you.
Well, when I went to the world championship, I was going to represent my state.
That's a good job. Thank you so much. And I see now that Alzadair Sebastian Ray is here, and we have you on our agenda to read your essay. If you can come, you're going to come forward to the microphone and read it for us? And then I do have a special certificate of recognition to give you, that I'll give you after you have taken care of that for us. He was the NCAA Student Library Ambassador, and this is, we'll turn it over to the mic to you.
Yes, ma'am. I was just going to read the last paragraph, because this is a really long essay.
Okay.
To conclude, I believe that the future, today, to conclude, I believe that the future of North Carolina libraries is in no way being diminished, but they are losing funding every day. They are continuing to be a part of our lives, and we should continue to keep them as a vital part of our community. I would like to promote the benefits of libraries to others, and I believe the NCAA Student Library Ambassador Program could offer that opportunity. And that's my last paragraph, but to quickly explain was that you submit an essay or poem, and you get to go up to Washington DC, speak to congressmen about why you care about the library. And this, this is my third time being selected, and with this year, which this was last month when I went, we actually spoke at the ALA reception, which is great. There are lots of people there, librarians from all fifty states. It was a great opportunity to speak to them.
And I have a special certificate for you in recognition of your selection as a three-time NCAA Student Library Ambassador. This honor illustrates the commitment and dedication you have shown throughout this year. And this is from the Office of the Mayor, Town of Hope Mills, and I'd like to present you with this certificate this time.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have public hearing. And this public hearing is to receive comments on amending the Town of Hope Mills Town Charter to alter the terms served by the board members to four-year staggered terms as permitted by the North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash one oh one four and North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight one oh one eight, and to be placed on the November twenty eighteen election ballot. So at this time, I will open the hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there one, anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this? If you'll give your name and address so that we can duly record that.
Rob McLean, fifty-four, thirty-five Fountain Lane. Madam Mayor, members of the board and public and staff. This question here, it does mention on the agenda that this would be put on the, on a ballot for us to vote on. However, in the actual resolution of intent, I don't believe I saw it written down there anywhere. And I would go further than that and say, the town method of having people sit for two years is in actuality a fairly good one. If you look at the past history of this board, the people who've served on the board very rarely serve one term. So any excuse that there is a lack of continuity in the board falls under that. Currently on the board, there's yourself, Mayor, and Ms. Edwards have served on more than the last two boards. Mr. Mitchell has served on a previous board. The only two new people who have not served on the board are Mr. Bell Flowers and Ms. Larson. However, they both also did attend the Citizens Academy, so they have got a knowledge of what's going on. And I would say that if anybody is wanting to become a member of the board, number one, they need to take the Citizens Academy. This idea of, well, I'm going to have to have two years to learn, we can take care of that, basically in the first twelve weeks, by attending the academy. That gives them a very good footing to begin learning for the rest of it, and it should not take them two years to learn their job. On the other hand, if you have a member who is now set for four years up there on the board, it is going to be extremely difficult. If the population no longer wants them on the board, we have to put up with it for four years. That's a long, long time. We have gone through some boards where waiting for two years has been a long time. Four would be almost unbearable. Without doubt, if this does go forward in any way, in shape or form, it does have to come to the population to vote on. And I will say once again, and in public so everybody knows it, this board was voted in by one thousand two hundred people out of the sixteen thousand residents of the town. The previous board was voted in by one thousand people of a citizenship of fifteen thousand. The town voting population is nowhere near our real population and our eligible voter population. So I do not think it is right that somebody should be put into a position of authority for four years based on the feelings of a thousand people. And by the way, the demographics of those thousand and that fifteen hundred, generally speaking, over fifty. In other words, the older population, none of the new, none of the younger population, or very few of the younger population, I should say, are voting. So until we get a better representation from our voters, I do not think that it is a viable idea to increase the terms of our board members. Thank you, Rich, indeed.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, town commissioners, citizens. I'm not going to repeat pretty much what Rod was saying, but he's spot on. Two versus four, that's a lot of time. Sometime, those of you sitting there say, why did I run for office? You know, it gets frustrating. You wish you only, you know, you go to four instead of two, that's going to really be a long time for you to sit up there and be frustrated, making tough decisions, some decision that really don't want to make. It's a whole lot easier to work with two than it is four. I used, in military terms, we should say it's a long tour versus a short tour. Everybody was always volunteering for the short tours, because then it was only twenty-four months, eighteen months, and you're back at home. But to sit there, how many quality citizens will we actually have run for office with four-year terms versus two-year terms? Have to look at that. Right, wrong, the pros and cons of it all, is we want quality individuals sitting up there where you all at. And the best way to get that is to keep the terms where it is now. And like Rod just said, until we get a better consensus of the numbers and the people that are voting in this town. Because if we mess wrong and extend it to four, and we get some problems, Gerald A. gave me a head to stuff. Suppose we get somebody up here we don't want up here. It's going to happen. Two years versus four with problems, I don't think we want that. I don't think y'all want that. Better work against and fight against. I don't, the citizens won't have to work with that and deal with it as well. So I hope that y'all consider that and think about what impact would it have overall on this town.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition?
My name is Todd Zekollins, fifty-eight, sixteen Wallace Drive. I concur with Rod said and Grille said. The main reason you can get somebody up there with four-year terms is not compatible to even sit on the board like we have had in the past. We need to stay at two until we get more people involved with this community where they can be more effective. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time then the hearing is closed, and we don't need to really take any action because it's, the actions are, yeah.
The board can vote on proceeding with an ordinance or defer it, or either whatever the board wants to do.
Okay, what's the wishes of the board? So the option would be to put it on the ballot, or has that already been moved forward?
Procedurally, the way it would happen is if the board voted to proceed, then I would draft an ordinance. This, this, what we have right now is just a resolution of intent, which is basically just saying, we, we resolved to think about doing this.
Okay.
If you vote to actually do it, I would draft an ordinance that would take effect at, you know, upon vote at the, at the next election, that if it's approved at the next election. But you would actually have to adopt the ordinance, and then the ordinance would not take effect until voted in the next election.
I'd support that in the form of a motion. Of course, I'm the one that brought it up from our training in Chapel Hill. Those of you that read the paper note that Fayetteville's already bypassed the voters and took it straight to the General Assembly, and that in the state of North Carolina, some three hundred and eighty municipalities have gone to the four-year staggered term to allow their elected to be more effective in their positions and to guarantee better continuity of these boards versus, I think it's three hundred and eighty versus one sixty. It's probable in another ten years, you won't see two-year terms anymore in state of North Carolina at the municipal level. That's just my opinion. And, and I feel comfortable with it going to the voters. It was a rightful place to go.
Does anyone have a motion to have a second?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Throughout this entire discussion about the staggered four-year terms, and first I'd like to say thank you to the three folks that stood up here tonight in opposition of it. The only way I would support it, and I think, and I think the board's probably going to agree, is that this isn't up to five commissioners. It's up to the voters of Hope Mills, all of them. Regardless if it's a thousand or twelve hundred or ever how many will come out at the November election, it's up to them whether one of us or all of us are up here for two or four years. And that's the only way I support it, and that's the only way I have supported it. And with that said, I will, Mayor Portim, your motion is to put it on the ballot, correct?
Yes, sir.
I will second that.
The draft, uh.
I will second that.
An ordinance, I believe, right?
Right, and so right, right now, what we have in the resolution of intent is, is sort of a draft. This is what I would propose the ordinance to read if, if the board wants to go that route. And what I would do is, is take this language and put it in the form of an ordinance, and then I would include in that language that it becomes effective upon approval by a majority vote in the next election. So the board would actually have to, we'd come back, and then I'd have the language of the ordinance that the board would actually have to vote to adopt. And then you would adopt the ordinance, and then it would be contingent upon approval in the election.
This motion is basically for you to draft it?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All those in, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir. All right, next we have public comments. And did we have anyone sign up today?
No, Madam.
No? Okay. Next, our consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda, followed by, if we need to move something to new business, we can. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the May twenty-first, twenty eighteen regular meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the June fourth, twenty eighteen regular meeting. Consideration of the approval of the minutes from the June eleventh, twenty eighteen special meeting. Consideration of the approval of the minutes from the June fourth, twenty eighteen closed session. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the June fourth, twenty eighteen second closed session. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the June eleventh, twenty eighteen closed session. Acceptance of the May twenty eighteen financial statements. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty authorizing the disposition of certain personal property by donation. And then request of consideration for the Hope Mills Firefighters Association to set up a canopy and fundraiser during the town's July fourth and Old Mill Days festivities. And request consideration of Chief of Police Joel Charado to attend the North Carolina Internal Affairs Investigators Association Annual Training Conference. Travel would take six days and cost us twelve hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cent, and this training is included in the budget. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like moved to new business? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Motion to approve is read.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The first thing under old business is the end year, year-end budget amendments, number thirty-five of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, a hundred and forty-nine dollars, and then budget amendment number thirty-six of a hundred thousand dollars, and a budget amendment number thirty-seven, which is one hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and this is for fiscal year twenty seventeen dash twenty eighteen. And I guess, Ms. Adams, any explanation?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, these are all projects that were previously approved. I believe the dates that they were approved are on here, for the most part, projects that were approved. We just did not have the budget amendments at the time, so these are just cleaning up for the final year end of the fiscal year.
Okay, are there any questions? Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for budget amendment number thirty-five for a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty. That's to be reimbursed by FEMA. Budget amendment number thirty-six, and I think that's with the Powell Bill, right? And budget amendment number thirty-seven.
Okay, I have a motion, okay?
For a hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five.
Okay, have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next thing we have is dam project fund budget amendment number thirty-eight for a hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, and number thirty-nine for a hundred and five thousand, seven hundred dollars. And this is behind tab twelve.
And again, this is the same thing. The budget amendment for the remaining change orders and expenditures for the dam. Change order number five for the eel ladder, which was nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars, was previously approved. And then the lake, the, the remaining amount for the change order number six for the lake bed clearing, which was, which is eighty-two, four fifty. We already budgeted and had, had a budget amendment in the amount of ninety-seven, three fifty for that, which was approved in November. So the total of that was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars for that lake bed clearing. And then fifteen thousand for the MBP invoices. Currently, MBP is over- Currently, MBP is over eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and eleven cents, but we're hoping that this will close out the, of a year.
Yeah. Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make, make a motion. We approve budget amendment number thirty-eight. And budget amendment number thirty-nine.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand? Seeing none opposed. Next, new business, discussion update on Hope Mills Lake Park Phase Two project, which is from Fleming and Associates. And I'll turn that over to...
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Um, I believe Public Works Director Hector Cruz has spoken with Mr. Fleming. Um, he is awaiting, um, some further information, um, on the geotech survey, um, so he can finalize his, uh, three versions that he's designing for you all. But in the meantime, the house on the Salibi property, which was donated to the town, um, we would like to proceed with, uh, mold remediation, um, and then schedule, uh, well, get some cost estimates, some, um, for demolition and repurpose of the building materials for possible uses by the historic, um, committee. Uh, they, at their meeting, um, spoke about that, and I'll go in with my manager's report. I'll go into a little bit further detail about that and their meeting and what they would like to do with that. Um, but the, the property is just, you know, deteriorating. The house is not in very good shape. Um, if we're going to repurpose those building materials, we need to have it checked for, um, mold. Public Works Deputy Director, Don Sisco, believes that there is mold in there. So, um, if there is, then we would have to make a determination at that point, um, whether we were going to use the, the building materials or not, um, what would be the most cost-effective, you know? But then we would like to also move forward with getting some cost estimates for clearing the lot and grading and putting in some crush and runs so that we can go ahead and utilize that property for parking, which is very badly needed at the lake. And this would not be effective until, we would not move forward with anything until the ne- this coming budget year anyway, but we just are asking permission to move forward with getting some cost estimates.
And I will say, as liaison, I was gonna say something at the, uh, official comments, but the, uh, Historical Preservation Commission asked me to relay the, in their minutes that, uh, they would like that building repurposed or at least have it, um, researched by staff, whether it can be repurposed. They also, uh, added in the old parish house. Uh, and there was a consensus in the, uh, by the commission that they would like, um, to, for the staff to consider putting in like, um, a small community center with public restrooms there beside the chapel.
Right.
That would also be, um, I think in the old, uh, in the Heritage Park plant, there's a bridge that will come over the creek and that'll be convenient for our citizens as well. Uh, they also, uh, since I'm on the topic, I guess, uh, they're in the final process of finalizing their ordinance and rules of procedure, and that's gonna go, uh, to our town attorney, uh, maybe by the middle of this week. And then, uh, and then it'll come back to us and they would like us to, um, uh, push that through as fast as we can so they can get started doing what they need to do. It's been a long time coming.
Long time.
It has.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Melissa, what items are included in the three design proposals from Fleming and Associates?
Um, I have the copies of the minutes, and I'll just read that. One of the options that Mr. Fleming discussed when he came to the meeting, um, with you all was, um, in lieu of a design of a bulkhead to tackle the steep slope issue, was, one option was lowering the grade of the walking path along the road and building retaining wall, which would eliminate the need for a bulkhead. And then I believe the actual motion of the commissioners was he was going to come up with three different designs for you to look at that would have, um, to include a bulkhead, kayak launch, erosion control, ADA accessibility to the swim area, and sloping of the grassy area along the lake, and bring that back to you all to, um, pick your, what you wanted to move forward with.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask that is because I thought we took one of those options off the table. The, the one lowering the, uh...
The tier.
Yeah. I thought we, I thought we took that one off the table.
I thought we did.
I thought we did also.
That's, that's the reason I asked. I, I think it's just two designs.
Okay. I can clarify with him.
Yeah. Am I right? I'm...
Not sure. You can do tier down there anyways, 'cause I think it'd run into the water table pretty quick. I don't know. The water table's not very far below the ground, I don't think, right there, but I, I'm not an expert.
That's, that's the reason why I asked. I just wanted, wanted to be clear about the options and, and second, wanted to be clear of what our intent is as the board. Is that I think we're, we centered on just two options.
That's right, Commissioner Bellings.
Okay.
It's what I remember.
This kinda goes off task, but the audio, 'cause I tried to listen to the audio, is very difficult to go back and listen to. Is there anything we can do for the quality of the audio? Ever since we, before we, you know, when we just had the straight audio and no video, it was much easier to hear, but with the video, I couldn't hear what was going on. Okay. We can take a look at, um, maybe the, just the audio by itself without the, um, the video recording? And, and see, 'cause...
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. I think we need to...
Sixteenth meeting.
Looking for a motion.
We need a, a motion as far as the Salibi properties, so that... Okay. So we're gonna, we have a motion to, um, evaluate for mold and then proceed with demolition and repurpose of the building materials and let the, uh, town manager and staff do that? Is that... Okay.
I'll bring back the...
For evaluation, right?
Yes, I'll bring back the cost estimates, um, for board approval.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Um, with mold, do they have, do you have to do the remediation even before, uh, demolition?
Yes, you do, because if, if there is mold in there, um, you have to, there's a different way of demolishing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand? Seeing none opposed. Okay? Next thing on our agenda is a consideration of proposal from Donald M. Thomas for geese control at Hope Mills Lake. Estimated cost for the first two weeks could be two to three thousand dollars.
Yes, so Madam Mayor, um, the board at the last meeting directed me to, uh, research options for the geese control. Um, and I have researched the, uh, air guns, the flags, the little, little flags you can place out. You can put little pinwheels. You, there's numerous different things that you can, that you can do to try to deter, um, the geese. And ultimately, from what my discussions with other municipalities that have similar issues, um, that have lakes and airports and golf courses, those do not work. The only thing that does appear to work in any way, shape, or form is the geese control by, by the border collies, by the dogs. Um, I have since had another conversation with Mr. Thomas, and he has indicated that this is probably not the optimum time to be doing this because the geese are, um, they're, they've got their young down there and the babies do not fly. So they're not going to fly away at this point if we decided to move forward with this right now. So, um, they can swim away and they can walk away, but they will not fly away. And typically, you're not going to have as much success with this type of, uh, of a deterrent if they cannot fly away. So, um, based on, um, the conversation with him, um, I would recommend that probably we not move forward at this time. We can revisit it another time if the board so chooses. If the board would like to just forget about it, that's fine too. Um, so, but I researched it.
The...
There we have it.
One que- request we had from the Lake Celebration Committee, which is they understand the young and they were worried about the babies being...
Yes.
Yeah. They were concerned about that, but their concern is what can we do before the event so that we don't have a situation where people can't be comfortable putting down blankets or chairs or the children playing because, um, they used as an example, um, today, some of them were out there and it's, you know, it's, it's just lots of it. So what could we do as far as cleaning that area before, prior to the event?
My recommendation is, number one, we have to get the public to stop feeding the geese. That is what's causing them to stay in that area, congregate in that area. Um, so we, we really have to get the, the public's cooperation with that. Um, there's also, um, you know, there's a possibility, um, Paul Howard, our, um, animal control officer, brought me some other information for, um, goose control. And there's a possibility we could put up, um, some temporary fencing, um, along the shoreline to kind of prevent them to, you know, from coming on shore. Um, but as far as cleaning it up, I, I mean, we can clean it up as best as possible, but if they're continuing to come up on the shore, it, it's within a matter of, you know, probably one day, uh, because they, um, have a lot of waste. Um, it, it's gonna be right back in the same situation, I'm afraid, um, unless we deter them from coming on shore a- along the, the park area. Um, so I'm not sure. I, I do feel like in, in, in discussions with Mr. Thomas, he has indicated that he felt like with all of the activity that was going to be taking place from Saturday to Tuesday, that it probably won't be an issue. Um, you know, if there's a lot of activity down there, um, they won't be around as much. But again, we've got to get people to stop feeding them.
Yeah, but I was, I was thinking if there, all that activity prevents them from being there, maybe if we cleaned it up before that activity started, maybe we could, that would keep them off of it. And I guess the other question would be, we've got the signs up and they aren't working, so...
Well, it is in our ordinance, um, so I, I think the next step is coming up with an amount for a fine and then bringing that back to you all, and then, um, we'll start fining people. And I can get with, um, our town attorney to determine, um, an applicable amount that... 'Cause usually when you get people in their pocketbook, they pay attention, so it's a thought.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I spoke with a gentleman this weekend, a Korean War veteran. He's lived in Hope Mills most of his life. I'd share his name with you, but he told me, he said he'd just like to keep it to him, keep a conversation between us. He said that the, the geese are gonna win every time. Before two thousand and three, there was so much activity in that lake, there was no problem with geese, there was no problem with, with kids feeding geese, there was no problem with water quality. The problems they had in two thousand and three was just rowdy teenagers and, and wild boat riders and, and skiers. Didn't have any of this prior to two thousand and three. Then we lost the dam. Then the geese took over because they felt like the pond belonged to them, and it did. There was nobody down there and there was no activity, so they nested up, up and down, all the way to the back, and owned it. Then along comes eight, nine, we put the dam back, they get a little shocked, they said, well, gosh, somebody's trying to take it from us. Now, this older guy shared this with me. He said, then again, well, then we lost it again, and then it sat there for another nine years and they multiplied again. And this is where they are. Now, a bunch of them have nested up to the back of the lake and they know where the food source is, so they come down to the lake park to get their daily feeding. Now, you can take dogs out there, you can do horns, clickers, and whatever else you want, but they'll just fly out in the lake and it's a waiting game. They will win every time. I don't care how much money you invest. They're birds. They own it. Now, going forward, this gentleman believes that the activity itself by the public will eventually move the geese along. And they have decreased in numbers over the past few weeks, as we have seen, but we're going back to the feeding again. You know, and I think that once the birds disappear or decrease in numbers, the feeding will decrease as well. But some of these that are, some of these birds that are there now, they were born there eight, nine, ten years ago themselves. They don't know that there's ponds at FTCC that they can come to. So that, I'm just gonna share, that's just a story I'm gonna share, as he shared it with me.
I will share you one. This mother with two small children used to walk downhill Crest Street and fed the ducks. And that was in nineteen eighty-four. And they were there in abundance then, and they were there, uh, throughout the season. And when, and when I first was elected to the board, and I think, uh, Mr. Collins can tell, allude to this, we were looking at then what to do in two thousand and seven because of knowing what had happened back in the two thou- the early two thousands with the population. We knew they were coming back because that was one of the things we talked about then was fining, and everybody got real concerned about fining children because the children was the ones that, that were feeding the geese. So I think it's just, uh, the solution is we're gonna have to hope the activity does it. And I, you know, we're get, we're very busy now, but there's still, the feeding, I guess, is it. And I don't know how you tell... I mean, I, I can tell you as a mother and with two small children, looking back now, I contributed to the problem 'cause we probably fed some grandmother duck that's out there, you know? Uh, but I think that's the issue, is how do you tell the ones that are coming to feed them? Um, because typically it's a parent bringing lots of bread for, entertain the children.
Well, we've only had the lake back six months now, uh, and the geese have been there a lot longer than six months. And then, of course, we've had some signage we've put up down there as well.
Yes, and maybe it'll work.
And, and, and you know, this older guy, he said, look, he says, give it time. Give it time. Don't rush to include something in here that, that's probably not gonna work. You're gonna be, spend a lot of money on some, on a maintenance plan, it may not work. He said, give it time. And they'll, and naturally, they'll move on. So that's what I'm gonna share, is to give it time.
So I guess at this point, we just wait and see? 'Cause there would be...
I think, yeah, just no action.
Even Mr. Thomas, okay, so no action on that one?
Yeah, no action on that is fine.
All righty. Now we're moving to reports and information, and manager's report is next.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, okay. Uh, Rockfish Road sidewalk, crews are installing a temporary silt erosion control fence along the portion of Rockfish Road where we are installing the sidewalks. Public Works Director Hector Cruz has a meeting with the DOT District Engineer tomorrow, um, Tuesday, June the nineteenth, and we're hopeful that construction on the sidewalk project will begin soon. River Road, which was damaged during Hurricane Matthew, the diversion of the water line has been completed by PWC, and they conducted an initial water sampling and has, they've had to come back and do a secondary sampling due to the first not meeting the threshold for bacteria. Eel migratory season ended on June fifteenth, and the total count for the reporting period is two hundred and twenty-nine. A final report has been sent to the appropriate agencies, and the next reporting dates are from September one through October fifteenth. The McAdams Group was here on Tuesday, June the twelfth, as part of their public input session. Since then, I have sent them contact information for all the area churches and various civic organizations so that they may send them survey packets for their distribution. Representatives from McAdams was planning to be here on July fifth for the food truck rodeo, um, but after discussions with some of the, and there is a typo in that flyer, it is supposed to be Thursday, June the fifth, not Tuesday. But after discussions, um, what I'm going to do is call, uh, Rachel Cotter and ask her to send us the... and ask her to send us the packet information so that we can display that during the fo- food truck rodeo, and not have them come to that and reschedule another date and time when they can come to conduct that survey. We've also, um, whatever we plan to do with the food truck rodeo, if we're going to do the survey ourselves, um, we'll put that information out for the public to be aware that we'll, the staff will be conducting that. Um, the Historic Preservation Commission met on Wednesday, June the thirteenth. And Mayor Protem Mitchell, um, communicated some of the, some of the issues that they discussed. Deputy Public Works Director Don Cisco did present them with his initial scope of work statement for the museum project. I believe that they have a few minor items to work through, but they're ready to move forward with the request for proposals process. In addition, they discussed the possibility of the demolition of the Episcopal Parish House and the property that was donated to the town, the Salibi House on Fountain Lane, and repurposing some of that lumber from the two buildings for the new construction of a small structure, which would serve as a community building for the, for the church. Um, it was their, uh, plan, if we obtain ownership of the church again, that they would like to be able to use that as, um, you know, maybe a small wedding venue. In order to do that, we have, would have to have a, um, uh, public access, um, a community room with ADA bathrooms.
I'd like to add, um, also, they wanted to try to keep it true to the period of...
Yes.
When the chapel was built, if possible.
Yes. Yeah. So it would be, um, something that would look like the, the period. I have been asked by the North Carolina League of Municipalities Board of Directors Nominating Committee if I would be interested in serving on the Board of Directors as an alternate for one of the three area managers' positions on the board. If appointed, I would serve as an alternate until, until two thousand twenty. And at that time, I would then become eligible to serve as a member on the board for two, two-year terms. The Police Department, uh, conducted recently a speed survey from May thirty-first through June eleventh in regards to a citizen complaint of speeding on Pine Wood Drive. The complaint also addressed vehicles crossing the center line and driving in the opposite lane. The survey consisted of data obtained through their radar speed design sign, directed patrols, and a door-to-door neighborhood inquiry. Um, after the door-to-door inquiry of residents on Pine Wood Drive, twelve of the thirteen houses requested speed bumps. Based on the findings, um, it, it is the Police Department's recommendation that speed calming devices be placed at two locations on Pine Wood Drive. And I would ask for, um, a consensus of the board for, uh, them to move forward with Public Works on that, if you so choose.
And the wishes of the board?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Yep.
Go for it.
All righty, thank you. And then, um, at the last meeting, I notified you all that we were updating, um, our emergency preparedness, information and our emergency operations, uh, policy. Um, and we have designed, um, our own, uh, City Fayetteville has these, Public, uh, PWC has these. So we have designed our own information, um, for residents. After tonight, I wanted to sort of preview it to you all tonight, but after tonight, um, we'll place these items on the website and we'll also post them on our Facebook page. There'll be a link on there where people can go to the website and, you know, print off the information. So this is something I, I don't think we've ever, um, had this type of information available, so... I'm very proud of Tiffany. She did, um, she did the design work on this, so good job to her. And that is all that I have under my manager's report.
All righty. Next, we have discussion up down proposed joint public safety, police, and fire facility.
Okay, and you've got the information in your packet. This was just provided as an update only. Um, do you have any questions concerning the information that was in the packet?
Anyone have any questions or concerns in reference to it?
No, just good information of where we are.
And as things move along, we'll, we'll keep you all updated.
Okay. All right, and next we have up down Hope Mills Lake water quality testing.
Okay. Um, staff was unable to perform sampling the last week, um, due to the rain. Um, we do not, uh, sample within forty-eight hours of a rain event due to the influx of bacteria from stormwater runoff. Um, this procedure is consistent with other jurisdictions' sampling protocols and procedures. During rain events, the lake water is inundated with runoff from local roadways, residential and commercial properties, and upstream neighboring communities. The excess water causes a flushing effect of all the organic material in the lake bed. Staff does not find a benefit in samples that are known to have excess contaminants in it from unknown sources or non-point source pollutants. Staff will maintain sampling results by performing two sample collections during this week, June the eighteenth. Samples will be averaged, and the totals for each sampling event over the thirty-day period should not exceed the state allowable limits. We're hopeful that the town can reopen the swimming area safely for the Lake Celebration and the July fourth planned events. Water sampling took place today, and we will take another sample Wednesday morning.
Any questions?
All right. Um, next we have reminders, and of course, um, the one thing I wanted to bring up is, uh, Swamp Dogs have invited us, um, as a board or as members that may want to come to their July third event. Um, they want to, they're not really part of the Lake Celebration, but they are having fireworks and a big event that evening, and they would like to, uh, invite our board to come. They said that I just need to get back with them so that they could include that in their program. But, uh, they have, uh, it's our, we have our beach night here. Um, but their, their actually event starts, the ballgame starts at seven, but the fireworks is not until the game's over. So they were looking at us coming and being part of that. So, uh, again, that was July third.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, under the reminders, um, we did have that the Lake Advisory Committee will be meeting June the nineteenth. That is incorrect. They have gone to every other month now, so their next met, regular meeting will be in July. And we have re- reposted the, um, the new schedule on the website and the bulletin board.
Super. Okay.
Madam Mayor, also under reminders, uh, June twenty-sixth, I think most of us on the board have RSVP'd. DOT is having a session with the local elected from two to three, I believe, at Camp Rockfish, uh, for input about the I- two ninety-five, uh, loop coming around to Camden Road, I believe. And then also, the citizens are invited from four o'clock to seven o'clock out at Camp Rockfish. Of course, I guess the citizens could come from two to three. I think it has to be a public meeting. I don't, I don't know. But, um, I would assume it's a public meeting as well. But they're, they're having like a floating thing, I think, from four to seven. I don't, I didn't know if the town could, we could get something on Facebook, 'cause it had, everything was in one email.
We can, yeah, we can put something...
Especially with the one with the citizens, if we can get that out there.
And I do want to remind everyone that our, uh, board meetings in July will be moved, uh, so our, our next board meeting is July ninth, instead of the July second date, which is during that time of, um, celebration and things happening in Hope Mills. So July ninth is our next meeting. Okay, next we have, um, staff comments. Ms. Starling, do you have anything? Ms. Adams?
No, I don't.
No?
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, any official comments?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Welcome to the team, Ms. Starling. I'd like to, uh, thank the folks that spoke during the, uh, public, um, uh, hearing. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms., Commissioner Edwards, anything?
I can't think of anything.
Mayor Protem?
I'm, I'm good. Appreciate everybody coming out.
I'm good also.
You're good? All righty then. Um, and also, this evening, Commissioner Legg is not with us because he is working. He is at the, um, ball tournament, which is happening across the street. So he was, he let me know that he would not be attending our meeting because of that. He was, uh, working this evening. All right, next.
Madam Mayor, I got a motion to conduct the closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A four, discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, and pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A six, to discuss personnel matters.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. We will be in the conference room, and we beg your patience. We'll be back as quickly as possible. Thank you.
It's still early, though. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order.
Madam Mayor, uh, make a motion to move to seal the minutes of the closed session. Until such time as the release of the information, we no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session, and further no action was taken.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All righty.